Our Father in Heaven, we once again thank you for another day and ask you to thank me. We ask your blessing on this meeting of board of mayor and city commissioners. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions for our city. And we ask you, Lord, for us to be good stewards as we look to be good stewards in our time, our talents, and our resources. Be with us now and guide us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received. Follow the agenda. There are three items that we are taking off the agenda. Out of ten, under the consent agenda, and then under new business, item B has been removed from the agenda. And at the end on executive session, we have individual personnel matter out of A. Out of B, potential acquisition of property. And we're going to add C, which is potential litigation. Any discussion? Call paper? Aye. Motion received. Follow the minutes of regular meeting, September 28th, 2017. All favor? Aye. Any hearings and reports? City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items to update both the commission and also the community. I'd like to start off with the 29th Street project. The work is progressing very well. It's going to sound like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth on this because, as you all know, we're adding the water piping in there while the roads are open. We just got approval from the Kentucky Division of Water to proceed with that work. That delayed us a little bit there. However, simultaneously, the crews are also moving expeditiously up Simpson Road, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule there. Overall, we're about five weeks ahead of schedule. Why I bring this all out is that we're going to republish the timeline that we put out previously on Facebook and a couple of the other social media. Essentially, if you look at the old calendar that we had, it's going to fall off the schedule to the right by two weeks, simplistically. There'll be other small changes, but we'll have that out by the end of the day. One thing is the application for events. We've been having challenges with application for events coming in pretty late. This causes the city staff to not give it the due diligence it needs. I'd just like to reiterate, we try to get those 45 days in advance. That gives the staff sufficient time and make a recommendation to the mayor and the commissioners. Next topic is on paving. We're putting together the spring paving list. It's not totally complete yet. We're still taking the input. So if you're interested in paving that, you'd like to see get paved and it's not already on the 2017 list, if you go to the city website, click on departments, then engineering utilities, engineer, there's a button there for request a street to be paved, paved the spring list for paving is on there, but we're going to adjust that as necessary. Also want to thank Hometown TV. They have been taping these sessions for a couple of months gratis, and we really appreciate you doing that. We're looking at a lot of different options to best communicate with the community. Hometown TV will be part of those discussions, of course. We are simultaneously today taping with internal assets. We're going to have that posted on our website within 24 hours, and so the community can reach out and look at today's session within 24 hours. Three things I don't have an update on, just that there are works in progress that I previously agreed to all on. Kentucky pension impact analysis, the how we can help button in the ordinance survey are also works in progress. We've experienced a little bit of delays in a couple of those things, but we'll continue to work. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'm going to throw one thing in, and I have talked to our finance department, you know, this being our second quarter, and we've been getting month reports, and we wanted to kind of have a quarterly report, very brief. Mr. Gud, maybe our next meeting, our next regular meeting on where we're at in each department budget-wise.
I actually have an odd presentation at the next meeting, so...
Okay, so that'll work great with that. And to help us keep a handle on, you know, staying within our budget and see where we're having a problem, maybe going over it or we maybe underbasted too far. And the other thing along that line, I appreciate the booklet we got from Kelly Galloway, especially our garage, if you all looked at that and talked about, they specifically point out our safeguards under garage so we don't have another event like we had a couple, three or four years ago now, I guess, but it loomed heavy for the last several years. But appreciate their work. We'll tell them that when it come at our next meeting. But those are the kind of things we need, you know, cameras, locking system, that things are protected and kept locked from not being able to account for that. So I appreciate the work of our finance office because I know you all been up there recommending cameras, recommending the locks and all, and I think you all Galloway's pretty well substantiated that we're doing the right things. So I appreciate that, as mayor.
Can I have a question?
Absolute.
What are we right now on getting the streets and this whole thing in place that we've been trying to do for now two years, two years now?
Streetscape.
Streetscape.
The current state on the streetscape is we're getting a final cost estimate together after the KYTC approves the type of lighting that we've got potentially coming off the bridge in front of Burger King and Starbucks out of the board. Approved the budget for $875,000 last year for continued streetscaping and also a couple other projects. So we're waiting on the final approval back from KYTC for that lighting. Then we'll have a cost estimate to move forward with that specific streetscape.
Will this also include any kind of things that will be going on for going on Winchester and that sort of areas that will help?
The specific streetscape that I'm familiar with is the one that I just mentioned. There's also for the follow-on to the work on Judd Plaza, which is still being worked. Is there anything else, Mr. Eastwood, that I've missed?
No, both of those should be designed, finished through the winter and ready for spring.
Does that answer the question?
When does all this want to start? Well, this has been two years that I know of that we've been trying to get some sort of a thing going on, and, you know, for two years, that just doesn't seem to me, I mean, I'm seeing now that we're not even wanting to see anything until next year. So are we doing this?
Well, Commissioner, that's a good question, but I think that some of these particular issues were not maybe perfectly followed up on.
Well, I know it was, I know it was some of it on...
Yeah. And the other thing is, you know, we're waiting on the 12th to 13th street, streetscape, which is what we need to do next is, and we talked maybe two or three times yesterday, you know, with Ryan and city manager, it's kind of in the hands of Kentucky Highway people and not just in Plenningsburg because they're great to work with, they truly are. Somewhere in Frankfurt, and I've asked the city manager to have either his office or Mr. Eastwood's office call every day. I mean, I know they have the state, but we just have the city, and that's all we're worried about. But if we don't keep urging them to give us some kind of approval, obviously, we're going to pick up, we're not asking them to do the streetscape, you know, we're doing that. We'll ask for money, we'll ask for approval to start it. But part of that, the hang-up appears to be at this point, to reconfigure the stoplights and all when you come off the bridge, that's right on the right, that's kind of a hang-up in Frankfurt. They're not sure how they want to reconstruct those. I'm assuming it's going to be similar to Blackburn Avenue, it's going, they're going to be on the arms and all, which...
I was going to say...
You can do that, you can do any of them. I know what you're going to say. I hope they do better.
I was going to say, I hope they'll do a better job than they did.
But I do think that's what's holding up. We, the city's ready to move our part.
My ask, and he is also, one we haven't impaled, in the future, we get around Winchester, I mean, you know, Winchester, where we have our streets and the thing going on right there, not particularly where you're talking about, but the business section, the business section that we have.
Well, let me...
And I'm sure the people down the other way, they're concerned too with the business section up down the road that we're helping by.
Commissioner, my impression is that comprehensive plan in 2013 addressed Winchester along with the other items in the city, and that with the last year's budget, the 12th and 13th street was the next domino in that chain. I'm not sure where we're at on the rest of that document. It's something that we need to review and republish in 2018, and with other things that have happened to the community, especially economic development, it's a great time to review the document.
Well, I just knew that we've already backed back up to now. It was thinking, we're now two weeks, two, and talk right now, but...
Two years.
Two years that, you know, we thought that we were starting this whole deal, and it's it keeps getting back to back, and now we're in two months, we're now just backed up two more things that we still have to deal with that...
Well, I think, I think the thing we need to focus on, I think, is the commission, and I've shared this with the city manager, and Louisville has a program called Louisville Stat, and they actually keep track of each department and projects, and you have statistical evidence to show how far along the projects are. And I think that would give the public, if we had something in place here like that, it would give the public an opportunity to see, say, if in a budgeted year we have 12th and 13th street sidewalks that are going to be replaced, that throughout the year, through the budget year, we can see where we are with those projects. We don't want to wait until the 11th hour to try to get everything done and/or find out in the 11th hour that nothing was done.
And we want to know when the sidewalks are going to be repaved or things of like that, you know what I mean?
And I think that, I think staff's been receptive to everything we've talked about as far as that's concerned. It's just getting logistical stuff in place, and I think for a city manager, that's going to be your goal. I know that you're looking at everything.
There's a lot of great ideas.
Yeah.
A lot of great ideas. Cheeto.
Cheeto. Thank you anyway.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? This far remains public participation. If you have a matter you'd like bring forth to the board of commissioners, we'd ask you to give your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Sure, come up. Yes, ma'am. We hope that's working.
My name's Lisa Donaldson, Studio 21 Salon in Daysfall. This is our 21st year, and we're having a birthday party. And we had sent in a request to the Parks and Recreation. We filled that paper out about we wanted to block off part of 21st Street to have my husband's band play on Saturday from like two to, if we could block it off from like 12 to six. And it would have to be, I wouldn't want to interfere with Goodwill's business, but the other businesses, they're not open on Saturdays. So it'd just be for that short time period if possible.
And that's been turned in?
Twice, yes.
Mr. Murray?
Date of your event?
21st.
Okay, sorry.
21st?
Yes.
Got information on this?
I do have information on it. I'm still waiting on a couple responses from other departments. However, and I apologize if I haven't had it yet. Have you contacted Goodwill at this point?
No, I didn't. You know, I don't, if you are familiar how that runs, you know, if you could just do it like where our parking lot is, that way they could, their clients, their customers or other could still come in and park, and they have parking that they could go through the alley as well. So it wouldn't really interfere with anything that they were doing.
Sure. If it pleases the commission and I can step outside real quick, we can try to expedite this process.
Okay. Was, when did you make the request?
The first time, a couple of months ago. A couple of months ago, and then we went before last.
What happened that...
What happened the first time? You don't know? You turn in an event request?
Yes, sir.
And you got no response?
Well, we'll work on it and see what we can do. We do have to keep Goodwill in mind on Saturdays. I'm sure it's a big day there. Yeah, I got this time. Yeah, we do have it. Once you, once you expedite that out, will that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. You'll put it here, Mr. Murray.
Okay.
And he'll work with you on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Right here.
Hello. I'm Claudia Saunders. I'm with Brighter Future across the street. And I'm also managing the Ashland Coalition for Workforce Diversity. It's a grant received by the DVID Council, and I'm working with the Human Development Institute at University of Kentucky. This is our third meeting. We would like to see some city officials attend to show support for people with disabilities seeking employment.
Do that sound good?
Oh. What we do is we network with employers, professionals, city employees. We network and discover job opportunities for people with disabilities. Our goal is to make a more inclusive workforce. The date is next Thursday, October 19th, at 11:30 to 1:00. We are providing lunch in Tipton's Bakery Goods.
Marty, you'll lead there.
We'd love to have you. It's going to be at the Boyd County Library. All we need is an RSVP for food count. We're going to enjoy it. We have success stories coming this time. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. We'll try to be there. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Yates. I'm the senior business representative of the Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council of Parkers. I am not a resident of Ashland, but I do represent many members who do live within this community. Like to start off with a personal invitation to all of you. During the week of November 13th through 17th is National Apprenticeship Week, and we just recently opened up our new facility out on the industrial Parkway, which is within the Faucon area, East Park area. On November 13th, 10 o'clock that morning, is where we're going to have our open house, and we're inviting, of course, all of you.
What time is it, Jerry?
We have 10:00 AM.
13:00.
On the 13th, yes, which is a Monday. We're inviting several of the local schools, local politicians, even send an invitation to the governor. Hopefully, we can have him there as well. But I'd like to mention that we're also inviting Paul Blazer, because Paul Blazer High School is part of our apprenticeship program, where they have a direct entry into our apprenticeship program and would be attending this school. Like to, on another note, talk to you about payroll fraud, with the onside of the work that's coming that we can see in an area that, in all of the tri-state areas, that hurt the past several years. But now with the onside of the work coming on, there is issue out there amongst a lot of contractors that payroll fraud is being committed every day. Payroll fraud, which is also called wage theft or employee misclassification, is when dishonest contractors illegally label employees as independent contractors on 1099s and official documents or pay them in cash or off books under the table. By doing this in the construction industry, dishonest contractors can reduce their costs as much as 30%, which a legitimate contractor, which is what I deal with, being as a carpenter, and I am a human member and proud to be so. It takes contractors that I've worked with and worked for and deal with now on a daily basis, it's a disadvantage to them. Of course, their cost is going to be higher than someone who's dishonest and committing payroll fraud. A good example is a general contractor hires a subcontractor frame building. Subcontractor will hire carpenters. The carpenters will work under the daily supervision and instruction of the subcontractor. The carpenters will be obligated to work set hours determined by the subcontractor. This makes the carpenters employees sense they can't act independently at their own direction and don't have flexible work hours. However, the subcontractor classifies and pays these employees as independent contractors. This is payroll fraud. The subcontractor avoids paying state and local taxes, unemployment insurance, and workers' compensation, and they're generally not listed with the Secretary of State as a legitimate contractor. How much money does the, do we lose locally? Well, here in Ashland, you miss out on 2% city payroll tax that employees have to pay. So our local residents lose out on tax revenue when law-abiding contractors can't complete or can't compete against illegal activity like this with contractors acting illegal. And, you know, I want to throw this in there too. Paying your share of the taxes is what we're supposed to do as citizens. That's our obligation to be American citizens. That's what makes everything work, and we all know that. And contractors, everyone knows this, but if someone is not watching, they're going to do what they want to do and try to avoid and skirt under the system. Solutions, options, which you have in front of you, the different options that we have. Responsible bidder ordinance helps keep bad actors excluded from, from the beginning. It allows local government entities to decide for themselves within reason what qualifies as the lowest responsible bidder on a government project. Contractors with a poor track record or history of breaking tax or labor laws can be excluded from the bid process. Encourage them to change their behavior and guarantee the tax dollars only paid to companies that don't cheat. We can work to customize a responsible bidder ordinance to make it enforceable for the city and beneficial to the community. Contractor license, another option. This practice requires contractors to be certified or licensed with the city in order to bid on jobs. They periodically pay a small fee, which allows the city to fund inspectors to ensure people who are treated as employers, as employees, are also paid as employees. Licensing also helps direct work to local companies and create local jobs without requiring quotes, because only those local contractors will do enough business with the city to make the permit worthwhile. A wage theft ordinance. Wage theft ordinance has used the power of tax incentives to leverage compliance from the top down. This allows a city or other entities that grants a tax payment or tip to remove those incentives from developers bound to be using misclassified workers, because the developer has a strong incentive to keep their tax advantages. They will be sure to only hire subcontractors that play by the rules. And again, tax fraud happens. We know that happens. But an ordinance in place would help protect funds to the city. And, you know, I'm sure that all of you up there have things that you would like to see come to the community, but in the past years, and now you're probably strapped because of lack of funding. But if you've got contractors working in your community, and they're not buying by the rules, which is what we're supposed to do anyways, why not make them, make them pay their share? If they're going to work here, then they need to pay the taxes. And above all, try to get them to use local workforce. We have people right here who need jobs, local jobs, local workers. But with that, that's, I'll sit down and let your meeting move on.
Jerry, I want to address a couple things.
Yes.
I have met with union leadership across the state that have been here with this ordinance, you know, and I think they've met, I think everybody's been talked to, I believe. And obviously, on the face of it, you know, why would anybody not be supportive of this? And I certainly am. We, we have a system, I know this goes on, and it goes on more with, I mean, we do a lot of construction and school system, and contractors will bring people in. We preach it every day. We have too many people out of work around here, skilled laborers, trained laborers, union and non-union. But we got a lot of people, and the real positive offshoot of some of the great things we have coming our way right now are the ability to get the people working.
Yeah.
But that's what makes everything happen.
Yes.
You know, they're staying with their families, they're able to send their kids to school in decent manner, they shop their stores and all the merchants, and the better your business community does, the better your community is, the less tax burden that would have to be placed on the residents which have ever retired in our city as cities across America like ours. But we're, I can assure you, I'm for this. We do have, we do have some situations, like they have to get a business license, they have to have a license to do business in Ashland. Now, I can tell you, our, we're hoping a bunch of stuff's coming this way, you know?
Right.
And not, not only regionally, which we're all supportive of, but within our city limits. And we're working hard every day, and I think we're going to see some things. But, but the truth of it is, we all need help. I don't know how to police all that. I'm not sure how to do it. But we have a system, a general system, and I'll depend on my staff, but certainly, we can get assistance and recommendations on how to make sure, like when you talk about the outlaw group or the bad guys that come in, and they, they have it and aren't going to, they're going to do it their way and, you know, make money their way. Usually, when you do it that way, you're not getting the best job. I mean, come on, you don't get people in, you should be paying $15 an hour, you pay $8 an hour, you're going to get, you may not get the $8 for that matter. All of us using public funds, it's paramount to us that, number one, we get the best work possible, and one A is with as many local people as possible.
Right.
Now, our current deal that's going on at the hotel, you can be assured, I've talked with those people, they assured me they're going to use local contractors, local labor. They, you know, union, non-union, doesn't make any difference to them, they want local because we want local.
Right.
So I think you have that commitment from us to oversee that part. We can't, we can't mail right into their business and say, you know, who they're hiring, but they know, and they have told me they're going to use local people. I think one aspect of it, Marriott has a particular contractor that does some of the, maybe the superficial stuff that makes you understand immediately, this is the Marriott rights who they use. And I think that's out of developers' hands, because it is a Marriott deal. But they've assured me that everything else will be done what it will be to the maximum extent possible. And with that being said, we, I'm on board to do everything we can to ensure that we get the best workers we can, the most local workers we can, but that we don't get anybody that's fraudulent. Now, is there a pretty good trail behind these people that have been caught in the past but paid subpar minimum wage rates to bring people in? And we all know that happens. We know it happens in a lot of places. Lower scale many times, lower, you know, not very big jobs, who knows? But the jobs are governmentally endorsed and we keep track of. We want it done the right way. I don't think, I think you got 100% support up here.
With, you know, you think about it with this tip, you know, the taxpayer has become a partner in this project.
Well, certainly.
So the expectation, I think, from the taxpayer would be that you would have local people who's paid taxes to pay the developer, help pay this project for the developer, that you would see a return on investment.
Yes.
By priority local. I think that's, that's a fair thing to say.
Sure.
And I think the good news is too, we've got these sample ordinances that we can have legal review.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
What we got already in place?
They'll go to our, our legal department. And here's the thing about it, because we, we, over the years that I've been in and as city government, we've done ordinance before, and we really, when we analyze them, when something comes up, we couldn't enforce what it was, at least a part of what we wanted to be done. So what you presented us, I have this, and I'm glad you get another copy, don't get me wrong. When we do an ordinance, it's got to be one that we can control, you know? We have teeth in it, and to do some of that, some of my staff might need some of your staff to say, here's, here's how work to lessen or...
Because what you're providing is work health risk, is that correct?
It's, it's in the, a lot of places in the process. What, what we do now is we go out on job sites, and what we can do is as we see misconduct going on, or a lot of times, the public, they, all they want to do is they want to work.
Right.
They want to make money. And the contractor who knows what the rule says, they'll buck against it, and they'll go to that individual and take, take advantage of them. I'll pay you cash, you tell nobody, you've got a job with me, but I'll pay you cash. That individual's scared to death, they know it's wrong, but they need, they need something coming in to feed their families.
Sure.
We run into it every day. And they'll come to me and they'll, or they'll call out of the blue and say, hey, I need some help with this. What do I do? And what we can do is if we've got a point person where we can come back to the city and say, okay, we can... and say, okay, we found this out, we've got a complaint to us, this is what's going on, we can do that. And we can do that on a daily basis. We go out with these jobs all the time.
So we need to ensure that there's a real good communication on the claim process, a claim against somebody, because, let's be honest, when people come in, they need the first blush of, we trust you.
Right.
You know?
Right.
But then, certainly, if we can find out ahead of time that there's a track record of being a bad guy, we, we need to know it upfront, and I, and also know that, I got a brush up, Mr. Pullman, help me a little bit, or Mr. Grubb, but in our point system, of course, we're not hiring the people down there, and I talk more about hiring the people to do city construction when we do it, you know, but if there's a local company, there's, there's a point system involved, and we, obviously, if, if it's all level, you know, we want that local person. But you made an interesting phrase there, and we use it all the time in the school system, we use it here, I don't know how many times we've implemented it, but it's, it's sure the right thing, lowest, most responsible bidder. Now, it gets a fine, there's a fine line there sometimes, who judges that? Well, if you've got a check references, which we do, and we did it in the school system, and you, you, you know, sometimes people come and say, hey, this guy's been an outlaw, they've done all this, and we do references, and we're not finding that out. So that happens, too. But sometimes you have to have the courage, but you also have the documentation to back up that lowest, most responsible, this one isn't.
Right.
Go to the next one. Now, you, you, you have a test, see, maybe you'd be in court over it, so that's where you, you have to have the.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be a laundry list, you know, but I think the taxpayer should be well-served, so how can you err? If you can, if it promotes more labor from within our community and our county and the region, how can you err? So.
Yeah.
And, and I would love for Ashland, I don't know how many cities are studying it, and I think when I met some of the people that came in to be with me, there's some cities a little hesitant on it. I would be, I would like to be one of the flagship cities to implement this. Then we probably, we won't have as many outlaws trying to get the jobs.
Right.
You know, if they know we're watching, we're keeping track of it. We've always had a strong union base in this whole area, and, and whether it's a union or non-union contract, we want the best workers out there.
Exactly, and it, it comes down to, you know, it's not a, yes, I am union, but it's not a union or a non-union issue, it's.
I respect that.
It's a tax money.
And I agree.
It's local jobs.
Local workers.
And their taxes.
Yes.
Well, we'll get, we'll have our legal go through it, we'll try to put something together, and, you know, we don't need to reinvent wheels here. If there's a, if you've got some copies of other cities that have adopted an ordinance, I'd love to have, our legal would love to have copies of that, would, would, you know, would help us in the narrowing down how our ordinance would read.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask you one? Where, where's this meeting at, ten o'clock on the thirteenth? Where's it at?
It's five, seven, five, and actually, the, the address is National Earth on TPS anymore?
East Park.
Or not yet, or?
It's at East Park.
It's East Park, outside the AT&T and the Centos building.
Will there be?
Yes.
Okay.
There will be.
If I wager, I initiated the program, and we have a high school that's going to do a.
I was going to thank you for that, because I, I heard you did.
Thank you. I'm very proud of you, very proud of you.
We're glad you did.
Yes.
It's a direct entry for students that otherwise wouldn't have to go, or wouldn't have anywhere else to go, or would have to hit the road trap.
Very successful out there.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I missed you on the fourth, I, I had another meeting, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's no problem. And I want to finish by saying that I spent twenty-one and a half years on the road as carpenter, generally working in licensed, and I, I live in Grayson, but a lot of the money that I've made down there, I brought back here to Ashland to spend, and I would have had a whole lot more money to spend if I hadn't been on the road if I could have worked here at home.
I hear you. Good point.
Would we agree with that?
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks for appearing.
Do we have a verdict?
Yeah, they're, they're good with that. So what we're going to do, you can tell me any of your ideas, but we're going to block it off in our parking lot and then to the Twenty-first Street, right by the alley, so they can still get in their back parking lot as well and their front parking lot.
Right.
And they're very nice about it, but we're going to have a band, and we're going to have a birthday cake, and we'll have specials and all that stuff, so.
It'd be a pretty good band if you were to have.
It's Party Best.
That's a good band.
So if y'all, y'all are always invited, so if you want to come to your Party Best and celebrate our Twenty-first birthday, we'd love it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that new business.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Anyone else want to appear for the, for the commission? Thank you all for being here, we appreciate you.
Old Business, item A. In order to the City of Ashland authorizing and directing the mayor's executive agreement between the City of Ashland, Wayne Supply Company and ATC Sequoia LLC, article leased at the cell tower by Wayne Supply Company and ATC Sequoia LLC.
Salute. Second, any discussion? All favor? Votes like sign, item B.
In order to the City of Ashland amending Article fifteen, section fifteen point three, definitions to include the definition of bed and breakfast facility, amending Article thirteen, conditional uses, or conditional use permits to include bed and breakfast facility as conditional use in an R five zone, and amending the table of permitted uses to include bed and breakfast facility as a conditional use in an R five zone.
This, this is just a, is this for a specific request, or is this a general? This is a, this is a recommendation from the Ashland Planning Commission, we recommend approval to allow bed and breakfast in R five zones, which are multi-single-family residential community density. Chris, we have, I guess, about ten or plus of those in Ryan, excuse me, Mysteries, in the community, right, R five zones. Some of the limitations, there's no more than one bed and breakfast on a lot, there's no more than two people per room, and it's not rented for more than seven days. Did I miss any of the highlights?
I'll add that it is also a conditional use permit, so anyone who is interested in opening a bed and breakfast in R five would have to go in front of BZA to request permission to move forward. So this isn't just if you want to put it up, if a bed and breakfast you're in, they have to make an application and present.
Okay, so there are steps after this.
Yes, sir.
Before BZA. Let me ask this, have you, I stay, I stay in whenever we can, we try to stay, my wife is crazy, notion, this summer, she'd like to do one. Yeah.
Thank you.
No, no, not here, not here, somewhere where people travel, but no, I'm not doing that, there's a lot of work for that anyway, but what my question would be, well, just, I don't have any questions for you, because you're all, you all, but, you know, the number of rooms, parking places for them, all the above, so if there's, if there's a congested area in an R five, they'll be able to come, abolish their disapproval, and on, on isolated requests, it may not be approved?
Mayor, that's why the Planning Commission recommended it as a conditional use permit, so the BZA must hear all that evidence and make a wish before they.
Okay, great. Okay. We have a second, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Okay, item C.
In order to the City of Ashland amending ordinance number seventy-one, series two thousand sixteen, known and referred to as the Comprehensive Hiring Ordinance for Police Officers for the Department of Police, by amending the employment agreement pursuant to KRS seventy point two nine oh.
Second, any discussion? All favor? Votes like sign.
Consider amended. A resolution of the City of Ashland adopting, authorizing, and approving a course of action presented by the City Manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on October twelve, two thousand and seventeen, as has been amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. New Business, item A.
In order to the City of Ashland amending the authorized positions of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number fifty point, series two thousand and seventeen, by increasing the total number of crew leaders, equipment operators, two and three, and pump station technicians, each by one, and decreasing the total number of distribution operators by three for the Department of Engineering and Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. We remove B, so I guess the next, the C comes B, I, I'll have a new agenda, is the appointment of a tennis commission?
Yes.
Okay.
These appointments are first.
Got you, thanks.
The first appointment, I will take the, these individually. The first is the appointment of Josh Blanton.
Aye.
To the appointment and to the Ashland Tennis Commission to complete a three-year term that started October one, two thousand and seventeen, expires October one, two thousand and twenty, and fulfills an opening on the board due to a former board member's decision to step down when the term expired.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Item.
The appointment of Preston Freeman to the Ashland Tennis Commission to complete a three-year term that started October one, two thousand and seventeen, and expires October one, two thousand and twenty. So when is the reappointment?
Yes, reappointment.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item E.
The reappointment of Christopher Clark to the Ashland Tennis Commission to complete a three-year term that started October one, two thousand and seventeen, expires October one, two thousand and twenty.
Salute. Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign.
A reappointment of Dan Phelps to the Ashland Tennis Commission to complete a three-year term that started October one, two thousand and seventeen, expires October one, two thousand and twenty.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Item G.
This is an appointment of Blake Gillum to the Ashland Planning Commission for a term that begins October twelve, two thousand and seventeen, and will expire January one, two thousand and twenty, to fill an unexpired four-year term of a former board member who resigned.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. And item H.
This is a resolution of the City of Ashland establishing a policy regarding the submission of items to be placed on the agenda for regular meetings of the Ashland Board of City Commissioners.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Out of I, discussion item, Riverfront Park, walking track.
Well, Mayor, I was approached by some citizens back in a couple of years ago about, after we did the trails of Charles Bay Russell Trail up here. And, you know, during that trail time, and I know Mr. Gracy contest, he, when he first came in here, he, he thought it was great, that there was a trail that they could walk through in the middle of town, it really added to us, added to the city. I worked alongside all of our commissioners here on that trail, and I worked alongside Sir Jeff Toler, and all the civic groups, Rotary Lions, Kiwanis, Boy Scouts, the JAM, and it was a collaborative effort, and I'd like to see us do another community build down at the riverfront and the perimeter of it. It wouldn't be as extensive as the build at Charles Bay Russell, because there was, you know, trees or anything, it would just be a matter of grading and putting like this slag dust down and patting it down, and I think it would be a, a good idea if we could consider this.
Sure. I think it's a great idea, Commissioner, I'm glad you, I'm glad all of it. Actually, in phase two of the Riverfront Development, we had rough drawings of the extension, it didn't, didn't specifically say walking trail, Commissioner, but it opened up that area for more picnic area with covered tables, and of course, obviously, a trail to get to them. And, I mean, we beat them everywhere, there's no question about it, and I'm all for this. What I'd like to do, and I, I give as many people as possible, I'd like to ask each, I'd like you to head it up, Commissioner, and each of us come up with a, someone to add to, one, two, three, four, four people in a community, check with somebody, and just submit those names to Mr. Gu to get going on it, and then the next meeting will formalize who they are at the meeting, but so we don't delay you, okay? So I'll, I'll get online, and each of you come up with somebody, and we'll, you can send to me, I'll call Commissioner Gu, and he can pull them together and go from there.
I have a, are we already going to come up with some sort of deal where we can get away from all this bad traffic down there and bring it back up here in, in the Ashland area where we can take these, you know what I'm saying?
You're talking about recycling.
Recycling, recycling.
Okay. Well, I think until, you know.
I mean, until, to me.
I wager.
Unless that's done.
Yeah.
Something needs to be done on, on having that relocated.
I agree.
Relocated.
Well, here's, here's something we need to think about, because I think we talked about this, I talked to a recycler that had been in before budget time and talked to us, but I said, until we get a handle on the pension, potential, there are several issues that we're all interested in doing, until we know for sure, and I think we're supposed to know something in December, Mr. Pullman?
December.
December seventh or something, no, it cannot be, it cannot be as bad as it's projected, because we'll, we'll survive, but we're going to have to do a lot of, we're going to have to be, do a lot of things, and maybe some things that we've never done before since I've ever been in city government, and I won't get into those things, but.
Well, no, I, I think, I think you are on the right trail there in terms of, obviously, our recycling program is.
I think we need to hold off on that.
Because we, we didn't budget for it, we don't have a plan for it, and we obviously don't have the money to throw at it at this point.
We're all supportive of it.
Oh, I, I think we are, but I think, Commissioner Steen, we talked a little bit before the meeting, is worried about how that looks if we're trying to beautify that section of town.
That's a good point.
And I think that we probably should go ahead and move toward moving those bins to Forty-first Street, like we said, and having a recycling center open.
Yeah.
While the city is open.
And enforced.
And as, well, Mr. Carpenter's out, is anybody there for him today? Anybody speaking on his behalf? Anyway, Mr. Grubb, you're always my whipping boy for following up, but we did talk about this at budget time even, is to find a reasonable place to have recycling bins in, in, you know, where some people may be accustomed going down there, a lot of people aren't, but no matter where you have it, they'll adjust, and I think we talked about Forty-first Street, where we put them inside the fence, you do it during working hours, so we don't have to worry about couches and chairs and, and windows and everything else, which I don't know, it's not being as fused as much scanning of the bridge, as far as I can tell, because I do take stuff there two or three days a week.
And it's not as bad as it was.
I don't think it is either, but it's, if it's inside the fence, we have cameras, we have people on, on board up there, it should keep it organized of what they are throwing in recycling bins, and it's certainly away from any area we're trying to beautify, develop, whatever. Commissioner, thanks, I appreciate you bringing that up.
City Manager, can we look at the possibility of one evening a week that is open until six o'clock or seven o'clock, something to where if somebody needs to get, he gets off work at five o'clock, he needs to go down to recycle?
I speculate the community would want those hours open a lot more than just during the day, so it'll probably be something a lot to consider, maybe tackled over time or some other adjusted work schedule if we want to maintain that.
Thank you.
Need a motion to go into executive session.
Let's see, can I?
I'm sorry.
Need to approve Studio Twenty-One's.
Oh, okay.
Partying pending staff approval.
We've arrived at a dream, and I'll have to, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Down executive, thanks, Commissioner. Executive session, go, go in, individual personnel, madam, single personnel, potential acquisition of property of the city, and out of C, we add potential litigation. Only these three matters will be discussed, and no action will be taken, and we'll return to executive, to a regular session, and give you my word, right? Don't get a little bit, so we are in recess to executive session. All those items on the listed, on executive session were discussed, and no votes were taken. Do I have any motions on the floor?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to terminate an employee employed as an assisted housing specialist in the Department of Community and Economic Development to be processed by the Human Resources Director.
Okay. You have a motion, or second, I mean, second. In discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Something else?
Yes, sir, I'd also like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an application with the Energy and Environment Cabinet to pursue potential future resources for the city, please.
Have motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. In discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Votes like sign. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We adjourn.